Okay, welcome everyone if you are rejoining us. I will call on order the Board of Education meeting for September 28th. Action on the agenda, are there anywhere any changes, Mr. Donovan?
No changes to the agenda.
I will make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second. Thank you, motion from Mike seconded by Dave to approve our agenda. Any questions? All in favor say aye. Aye, aye, and opposed. Thank you, and minutes, action on the minutes I should say. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting, September 14th, 2021. Special meeting, September 21st, 2021. Second. Thank you Brian. You knew what I needed. Motion from Rick seconded by Brian to approve our minutes. Are there any questions on the minutes? All in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
And opposed. Minutes are approved and vouchers are next which you have a copy of in board docs.
I will make a motion to approve some tent vouchers, totally one million nine hundred forty-nine thousand four hundred one dollars, ten ninety-nine cents as presented.
Second. Motion from Mike seconded by Rick to approve the found content vouchers as you just heard. Are there questions on the vouchers at all? There are none, all in favor of approval, signified by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
And opposed? Thank you, the vouchers are approved. Uh, this is the point in the agenda where we would invite public participation. Uh, no one has signed up. You would still have the opportunity to do so. Uh, come down to the front and sign for us and if there is no one willing and wanting to do that, we will pass. Referendum. Letter A is update for Mike Huffman. I would invite him down. I see he is down. So, Mr. Huffman?
Here.
Share with us what's happened.
Great, is it work? Maybe. What are you doing with me talking off? Okay. So, um, almost had a little bit more time tonight talking about your provision of contingency. Uh, I sent this up for a piece that's on your agenda for potential uh contingency expenditure. Uh, certainly don't want to short any discussion of the construction progress because we're in a pretty darn exciting time out here. Um, so as you know, uh elementary schools, uh we've really wrapped up that effort. There is uh just some minor uh functionalist items uh left to be completed. Uh, specifically, we're gonna get back out to consolidate and then make sure the the items that were put late on the functionalist there have now been finalized. Uh, but we do have a completion date, uh I believe it was October 12th, I think it was, or I don't recall the fact of the moment. Uh, like JP Cohen is looking to have every last elementary school functionalist panel off by the second week of October. So, that would be a good spot to begin. As we get over to the middle school, um, that that uh uh structure is going up very well. Uh, we've got the roof deck on, in fact now, uh the roofing is on there as well. The last piece, pieces of the enclosure that we've gotta get are uh the break veneer which is going on right now. Uh, the exterior doors and then the the windows. Uh, so it looks good for us to be uh buttoned up before uh we get into weather problems there. So, that's that's certainly been a uh a driving uh factor in the schedule to limit the amount of other conditions. Money that we have to spend with uh structure there. So, all all good uh in terms of progress there in the middle school. Over to high school, um, if if you've had an opportunity to see it, uh lots of things have been vertical. In the last week, precast panels for the pool came and got craned into place and welded into their their spots. Uh, the the structure for the gym uh has been coming together. And over at the STEM addition, uh structural work is uh probably about seventy-five percent complete there. So, progress is is good there uh and on our schedule. As as I'm sure you know, we're pointing towards uh approximately spring break uh for turnover of the STEM week at the high school. That's also uh about the time we expect to get in and do the renovations uh in the high school. That's definitely the most difficult uh and most risky piece in terms of uh owner's uh exposure to uh uncovering uh potential costs. Uh, I think that now is focused on uh the high school renovation section, creating the event entry, removing the pool, or rather filling in the pool, creating that lobby. So, I think that's all I'll say in terms of construction progress. If you can take any questions if you have on your.
Mike, did you say the STEM weeks may be not in spring break?
I think that's our target still, right?
Yeah. At least at the lower level. That would get the provision vacated, it would give renovations to the square areas, existent area. I hope we heard Mike that was gonna be in Christmas break. Is that? And was it one point of the target?
Right.
I think you were pointing at a full dinner they had planned. They had the materials that they got pushed back and they're showing us that uh, uh, walking a little bit forward maybe.
Mike, I have some questions for you.
Yes.
Um, so looking at the budget, I've looked at the last prepared last three uh budget reports from July, August, September. And uh, not surprisingly, um, the final project cost, each uh each of the different descriptions keeps going up a little bit comparative budget.
Yeah.
Um, and as you noted, uh contingency, we went through about thirty-three percent for the owner. Um, the one thing that, um, I guess this is more a comment than a question. Um, so we have about uh thirty-three percent of the contingency um already used up. And it looks like we're at thirty-nine percent completion. Um, so let's, so to me, you know, it's, you would expect that, but it looks like we're gonna be really close. And I think that's something we need to really keep an eye on. And if the boiler piece is approved later tonight, then then you're looking at almost fifty percent of contingency being eaten up. And we're only at thirty-nine percent of the way through. So, um, I guess we probably need to kind of keep an eye on that. Um, I guess I do have a question, do you have any concerns about that? Since we're fifty percent out, we may be fifty percent through our contingency and we're only thirty-nine percent done.
Yeah, that's what segue to really what is the bulk of what I wanted to discuss here tonight. Of course, just a couple of nuances to that. So, uh JP Cohen's billing uh comes thirty days in the rear. Uh, we project our uh expenses in more of a real-time fashion. So, while we uh while we say accurately where we are with respect to contingency spending right here, um, we're thirty days behind in billing. And so, we're we're we've gotten into the point where there's a lot of subcontractors on the site. So, the bills from the beginning only get bigger and bigger and bigger. So, there's a little bit of a disconnect there, uh where it says about thirty-nine percent completion by cost. That probably is more in the, I'd say, forty-two percent. So, a little bit of small difference there. Uh, the other things I would say is I'd like to take you back over the last three months. So, in July, I reported to you that we had one point two, no, excuse me, one point one two eight million in owner contingency. Then in August, I came to you and said, we have one point two four, I think, in owner contingency. So, it it actually went up. Now, what we're showing to you prior to your decision, this is before you're here tonight, is we're at one, we're at one point oh five. So, I just want to describe a little bit of that that variance. So, as we go along, um, multiple, multiple lines in the overall project book. And those those change monthly and and that's normal for a project. Some go up, some come down. So, we have executed some debt due change orders from JP Cohen. And when we do that, it shifts money back down to the bottom of the of the spreadsheet, which really just says what's left. And that's what I call the owner contingency. So, that's why that fluctuates up and down. But what you'll see is, uh, you know, on a graph that will have a a fairly steady straight line, even though your data points are 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 going up and down. So, I think your point is is absolutely a good one. Where are we roughly with the expenditure? So, we roughly have sixty-seven, sixty-eight percent of your original contingency left at this point. And we're roughly by cost forty-two percent done with the project. So, what I think we really have to look at are what are the risk factors for that contingency? The the biggest risk factor in any job is what we can't see. So, a lot of the underground work is uh is where on a lot of jobs, we deplete some of the contingency from now on. So, we've had a pretty good experience there that we haven't cut into our contingency for uh subterranean pieces components. Improper bearing capacity of the soil, uh running into tanks underground, uh running into uh under corona where we had a tremendous amount of rock that we had to blast. And that wasn't all known just from the early geotechnical reports. So, here we were fairly consistent with what the pre-construction geotechnical reports showed us. So, that risk factor is is all gone because we're we're completely out of the ground everywhere and every project. Another risk factor is that we are in multiple facilities, right? So, if you're just building a school out of cornfield, then your risk factors are, did 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 you get designing properties, right? Now you go and you renovate multiple facilities. We had four elementary schools. We did a little bit of renovation and arguing more at the middle school. And then out in front of us is the substantial renovation of the high school. So, by having those four elementary schools done, and we did pretty well there, um, there's a pretty big risk factor gone because it's four different buildings, right? So, I feel pretty good about that. Now we look at what's left in front of us and we evaluate our risk versus the contingency that we hold. And somewhere in there, you get to a partly scientific and partly gut feel for what should be our contingency. So, my greatest concern is exactly what I said. When we get into that very, very old structures, there's a swimming pool that was leaking for many years, right? Uh, and we are going to be quite invasive to that structure that surrounds this swimming pool. We're gonna cut into that structure up on the high side where we create the new entry. We actually have to take some of the trusses out to create the head height up high before you start to descend down into the new lobby of the pool. So, there there's certainly some risk there that makes me nervous. Um, but with the rest of the high school, um, structure, structure is always a risk. Getting to the point where you're enclosed because uh something we did is off by a foot and a half with the structure. It's a big deal to fix it. So, we're kind of through that. There's always the risk that something about the finishes won't work out. But then you start to get down into lower dollar aspects of the overall architecture. So, I'm not as concerned about that. Sorry for the long-winded piece, but I'm getting to what feels comfortable at this point. Um, I feel very comfortable about what is being presented in terms of an expenditure out of your contingency for what I I feel is a pretty good uh value added component for you as a district is as you move forward. Um, after that, if if you were to say yes to that, so that that would drop us down to, let's say, eight hundred thousand dollars. At that point, I would say, hmm, let's just sit there. What what do we have out there that we know about? Uh, and and how can we get through some more of the risk components uh before we start to think about any other open acts for the project? So, that again, that's 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 a little bit science. Where are we in the project, where are our risk factors? It's a little bit of just the field.
Are you tracking the risks as far as like status? Uh, I know a lot of it you haven't gotten to yet, but um is that something that you would do is track? You have a list of what the risks are, the the high risks and and you just kind of, you are or it's uh a JP Cohen kind of monitor the uh the cost of it as it's going along so that we can kind of be proactive before we can go, oh, oh, we're in trouble?
Yeah, well, we're certainly monitoring the, I guess we'll all call it death by a thousand cuts type of activity. So, I I won't say every week, but at least every other week, there's there's something that says, well, we got we got a little bit of cross-station, gotta ask a question of the PRA and their answer comes with a five thousand dollar cut. But that's the by a thousand cuts just of absorbing the contingency. We're in a pretty good spot there and I think what we can do is assess the quality of the documents that we receive from the project base issue. There are certainly projects where at this point you have exposed that gee, there was a discipline within the design that seems like they were rushed. Be it the plumbing engineer or the architectural engineer or the architects, uh, and on down the line. I don't think we've really exposed uh the the many big soft spots, if you will, in in what we see as the design product. So, that's that's good. That means we're not getting the death by a thousand cuts beyond what what is reasonable in respect. So, I don't know if we're monitoring uh beyond that in any any qualitative way, uh but certainly in a quick way.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Yep.
Mike, I have a question. Um, just compared to other projects you've done, because I'm sure you've done other very large projects similar to this. I mean, they're all they're all unique and individual, I'm sure. But uh, given the percentage of work that's been done, and you said we're at about sixty-seven to sixty-eight percent contingency right now, um, does that compare pretty favorably to other projects? As far as if, because I hear you saying from your perspective and your expertise, it seems like if you you would say that it would be a bad decision to go with what's being proposed for later. And is that is that in comparison to some other projects that you've seen and that experienced?
Yeah, definitely. So, first of all, we started in the appropriate position when we signed with the KMP. Been lots of projects where you just can't make the financing work out. You scale back on the design so much that it it hurts to meet the budget. And you're saying, wow, we'll get through this project with a skinnier contingency than it really needs, right? And then it's a bad outcome in the end. So, we started out in an appropriate position with owner contingency. And our our spending has been very measured. So, I think uh comparative to other projects, this is something up there in that top twenty-five percent in terms of the good range.
And even if we did make the two hundred thousand dollar expenditure, then we would still have about eight hundred thousand. Even with the unforeseen that could possibly happen in the renovation of the pool area, you still think that's a pretty secure, that's a good number?
I do, I do. Uh, I I will say that I don't think there's a lot of surprise good news out there. We've already taken the surprise good news of additional interest income. I think we started out with a low estimate and now we've taken it up to where where I think is is a realistic number. Uh, there's probably not any discovery along the way where we can save big dollars. So, it's now, it's, we're definitely in a cost avoidance mode. Um, but yes, I feel good about it.
Alright, thank you. I know this has been sent to me, this is a difficult question, it's just a comment, but um the pictures that you send in the report are really nice. You know, you drive by and you see them. I really appreciate it that your real view we got too, um, because I don't know about the rest of you and I can't fly through the buildings to see what they look from the top. Um, it's just nice to see the progress from the inside as well as the outside. So, I appreciate the time that you you put in, uh putting that into the report, it's appreciated.
Great, well, certainly we want to give you insight into what's happening out there, both good and bad. I I included a quality report issue in our report this time. So, uh, all that is happening, it's a lot of work and it's uh, gotta get it into a condensed report. Um, I think I would like to spend a little bit more time talking about what we have in front of you for a potential contingency expenditure, if I can transition to that. So, uh, I think Stephen included a memo in your board package, right? I don't want to be too clicky to that, I think it was a very good description of what we're going after here. Uh, what I want to say is that I think that this is a real positive thing for you to consider. Now, you you could decide to not do it and that would be, that would be okay. I'm just saying that, you know, sometimes you go to a a project leadership and you say, gosh, we have this two hundred thousand dollar expense, we don't have a lot of choice and we're not getting a whole lot for it. This is one of those good ones where you do have a choice. You could say yes to it, you could say no to it. Uh, but I think there is a lot of value to it for you. It was not something that the design team was tasked with. They were tasked with creating mechanical systems for the new spaces that we had. So, along the way, there's this uh uh understanding that uh what's left is fairly antiquated. It's not only antiquated in a way that is chopped up. And by chopped up, I mean that there are multiple pumps that served multiple zones, they were designed for something. And 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 that design criteria is no longer valid, right? Things have changed about building, mechanical systems have changed, yet you've got this boiler system that is designed for decades ago, right? So, it will clean up some of that. But what it will also do is it will take you to a much more energy efficient uh scenario. So, we are taking uh single-speed pumps and putting them on a frequency drive. So, they will ramp up and ramp down based on the need that that the various mechanical systems are calling for out in the space, right? So, they say, I need more hot water, open up a valve, open up a valve, that means the pump ranks up. Versus a pump that just is circulating water at a a consistent speed and the end user, the air handler out there, is just taking what it needs and the rest of it is just being circulated, right? It it takes that out. So, the energy savings of this uh is is quite good. And uh, we also have a a system that is is fairly antiquated and we will have some future maintenance to we can't really project the future maintenance. We can project the energy efficiency and and where the payback is. And it's a little bit difficult to predict that. But we're we're in probably ten, eleven, twelve year payback, uh just in terms of the original savings.
Alright, so I have just a question there, because when we had originally talked about adding on to the existing system, we had worried about the boilers and the different things and would that be able to keep up? So, we're still gonna be having the original boilers, but just the pumping system. So, how how much longer, you probably can't guess, with these original boilers?
Yeah.
You know, are they gonna hold up or are they gonna, are we gonna see issues there, which is what we thought would happen when we put that extension on?
Yeah, I'll I'll give you the, I'll I'll give you my answer to it, but really the the guy that knows everything about that boiler is sitting behind me, so he may want to step up here for this. But there was originally a plan to say, let's let's put in some new boilers to handle this. Uh, and there was a mix of old boiler, new boiler. And and we just said, well, that that's an old system, but it is actually a high performing system. So, there are things that we can tweak about it, but we have controls and valves that are associated with it and and save the cost. So, there was an actual cost reduction in our HVAC from Gao City by saying, we're gonna keep with that boiler and uh, uh, it's a good, it's a good boiler point that you feel confident in. Questions?
I think this is, you guys are getting very excited tonight for school finance and boilers. One of the one of the really cool things that we're getting inside of the building of our system is yes, we're we're keeping our two original boilers in the building. But we're also looping all of our other boiler systems together. So, the addition that was put on in nineteen ninety-nine, where right now it has its own boiler room that serves the addition to nineteen ninety-nine. Every pool has its own boiler system too that serves just the pool. So, the cool thing is is that all of those, all three of those systems now can either work together as three systems or they can all all be bound off and working independently. So, for redundancy, same thing, we're we're, as you said, you're really well to be able to operate on many different levels. You still be able to take care of both. So, keeping the old boilers isn't an issue.
And by keeping the old boilers, if that's a later day they need to be replaced, this equipment just bolts onto the new boiler that doesn't require replacement of? Does this have their independent, so this this cost is permanent regardless of whether it's status and five percent or ten or whatever?
Right, yeah, that's correct. And that does get to one, one of the significant changes to get the tidies all together. They have uh a system such that if a boiler goes away, you're still good with all the equipment. We had to go to a glycol system, mainly existing was a hot water system. So, the downside here is that when we go to that glycol system, to tie it into everything, as Stephen talked about, there's leaks on that water system. So, we would have to fix the leak to that water system in the tune of about seven or five thousand. Could we not move forward with the changing? Because we think that the vast majority of those leaks are right there around the pumps, the isolation valves, uh, like
Just tying all of them together that make them work evenly heated as well, I know as the dad of high schooler. Oh, often the winter surfers, they're really good. Holders, which makes sense, does does tying all the systems together help mitigate that type of situation?
I understand what Mike thought about the pumps that, you know, serving the original spaces that they were designed as replacing the pumps to be more dynamic, serve the zones that they are today should help.
There there's two features there. One, so if you think of the hot glycol as your utility, there's one feature, are you getting enough of the utility to the end user, the air handler? And then there's the other feature of how well does that air handler handle the utility that comes in? So, we're fixing one part of that equation, right? So, it should help, but not necessarily alleviate all those concerns. If you have an old air air handler out here, it doesn't efficiently convert that utility that he
So, I think I'm missing a a key piece in here. Um, so I read the memo. One of the things that is mentioned in that memo is that um uh pipe was run over summer months. Uh-huh, water boiling piping. That was uh, I don't remember what this reads, it looks like it was put in for new building infrastructure. Um, never mind, is that is that, if my understanding is correct?
I missed a piece of what you said.
Yeah, in in this memo, it says much of the high school's new building infrastructure that will eventually serve the new additions was run over the summer months.
Yeah.
Specifically the hot water boiling piping, boiler piping.
Correct, yeah. So
What exactly does that, did, can I explain that to you?
So, it was installed over the summer months. Uh, so, a a lot of that piping went out onto the roof just because it's difficult to get from point A to point B and point B being the new spaces were created, right? By pulling through an existing pump. So, it was more efficiently when on that part of the glycol system. But that piping uh is is immaterial to the existing piping we're talking about here today. That's the piping just to go from our plant, if you will, where the boiler is and where the old pumps and the new pumps reside, uh, out to the pool or the gallon. And that has been installed. And that has been installed already. I think the point is, for Stephen including that in the memo, is a little bit about the timing of this. Because that piping was installed, if we were to do this new addition, it would be advantageous for us to do it very, very quickly, because... You might have to help person this out. We'd have a little bit of trouble of using the water system and the glycol system at the same time, right? And I think that's what you were meaning.
That's exactly. And we talked about schedule earlier, the sub-division, like, well, we don't want to spring break. Did we spring break, so it's easier? Then I talked about all this boiler system being piped together. So we can't keep any existing system on lock. So you don't have to integrate, resolve these, their existing water system to be able to quote glycol? Or do the ground again, that we're proposing to be able to change the glycol? Now, if we go through that existing piping, over the roof, to the new additions, to be able to purpose addition, we're going to have to screw it.
So maybe I'm, maybe I'm not understanding or interpreting this statement quite correctly. I get what you're saying. The piece that I'm not sure is, what do you mean by was run over in the summer months? Like run over schedule, run over cost?
Over that, or even line up, I guess they spent a lot of time on that.
Okay.
Yeah, take the words "run over" out and just say "was installed."
Run over during the summer months. Okay, good, good. I'm with you now. Thank you.
For me, it's really a no-brainer. The $200,000 is, you know, the other option is now like it's $10,000. That other option is still $75,000, which is a good chunk of change. But you're getting a more energy-efficient system, and you're updating the long... It's all in here, you're updating the long-term solution, you're getting a long-term solution. So for me, it's a no-brainer, I can tell. And given the expertise that Mr. Huffman has given us, I have to think it would make sense to do the $200,000. That's just my opinion.
It's the only concern, I will just comment. There's a couple pieces of information that's missing. The payback period in the memo, we didn't have any payback information, but I can just provide that, about 10, 12 years for what to be a decent system. But then there's also the focus on energy incentive that was being looked into. And that does, we don't have any information on that, whether it can or cannot be done, or how much we would give back. And so for me, it's really hard to vote on something, to approve something without that, you know, without that, not having all of that information.
That's only my comment. But the focus on energy incentive isn't going to hike, isn't going to increase the cost. If anything, it will lower the cost.
Yeah, it would be a little subsidy to us.
It's like buying a car without really knowing what the monthly rebate is going to be when, you know, the car's coming from another dealership, which I have some experience, because I just did that. So I mean, if it was something that was going to potentially raise the cost, I can see that being an issue. But if it's something that's potentially going to lower the cost, I don't see that kind of being an issue.
Yeah. The reason we don't have that for you here today is that the current program that was related to variable speed pumps has sunsetted. So we have to see what the, how well the next program is funded. We'll have access to those dollars very, very quickly, but we're not able to protect it right now. I'm guessing that a good day on that would be $20,000? Anyone else for thoughts? Otherwise, we could put it in a motion form and discuss the merits of the motion if someone wants.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the project team to proceed with the Milton High Boiler Circulating Pump Revision Project with funds to come from the referendum owner contingency with a preliminary budget of $200,000.
I'll second that. Make a motion, Shelley seconded by Dave.
You have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Any other discussion on the motion?
Mike, what if the actual budget was that, say, 220, 240, something like that? For the final?
Yeah, a little bit of confidence that we can give there. So this all came together fairly quickly, and we said, "Gosh, because of the scheduling issue I talked about before, we got to get it in front of the board as soon as possible." So Stephen typed up his menu, or his memo, when we had some sort of field numbers from our contractors. Subsequently to the memo, we've gotten better estimates from North American Mechanical and just today, I believe, from Westfall Electric. So North American Mechanical, hopefully Stephen, I think they said it'd be between $1...
$150, $170.
$150 to $170. And Westfall Electric came back, said this is about an eight to 10 grand issue for electrical. So that takes us $160 to $185, what they're feeling right now. There is a design expense, but we've got to tack on to that. I'm expecting that we probably get $10 grand in design expense. So that high end takes us up to $195. Certainly, we're going to scrutinize those numbers as they come in based on a more full design. But it's also not just on an acting sketch. Maybe Sikkama from Frederickson Engineering actually did some pre-design work on this before we ever had conducted our conference call on it. So he's got pretty good design out there, that North American Mechanical was able to forecast. So I feel pretty good about the numbers. I would say it's certainly, you could lock it in and not exceed it.
Well, even on the preliminary, you're confident in that, too.
Mike, would this be bid out, or is it your current contractor?
No, it would be negotiated.
And given the fact that the motion says a preliminary budget of $200,000, if by chance, the rare chance it came in at 225, would we have to re-vote that? Because the motion specifically states with a preliminary budget of $200,000. That question was directed to you, Mr. President, sorry.
Yeah, I'm contemplating my answer. What if we...
So maybe somebody wants, you know, is there a choice of maybe amending that a little bit to...
I guess I have a question that kind of aligned with that. We had to wait, how is that holding up the process of the construction? I mean, you can't sit there for four weeks and hold up doing plumbing and valves and whatever to bring that over.
Then perhaps there needs to be an amendment.
Clarification.
That's why I brought it. Because I don't want it to, I don't want it to have to wait for four weeks if it gets to be like, let's say, $205,000.
I guess that's the board's pleasure. What's your level of comfort with the preliminary budget, given what Mike has told us about their confidence in those numbers?
I just stated my opinion.
I'm happy with the number, and I think the transparency would be there if something was different. And you'd let us know, communicate with us.
Okay, any other comments, questions before we vote it? Okay, legal roll call. The motion on the floor, repeated for everyone, is to authorize the project team to proceed with the Milton High Boiler Circulating Pump Revision Project, with funds to come from the referendum owner contingency and a preliminary budget there of $200,000. In favor of that motion, with a yes. Starting on my right for Dave.
Yes.
And Brian?
No.
And Mike?
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Joe is yes.
And Jennifer?
Yes.
Is a yes, that's six to one, motion passes, thank you. Okay, that will be preliminary exhaust, the referendum discussion. New business A is open enrollment alternative applications.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2020-21 open enrollment alternative applications as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Motion from Mike, seconded by Rick, to approve our open enrollment alternative apps. Any questions on those? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That also passes, thank you. Miscellaneous, A is staffing report, which you have in your board packet.
I'll make a motion to approve the staffing report as presented.
I'll second. Thank you. Motion from Rick, seconded by Dave, to approve the staffing report. Are there any questions therein? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Gifts and donations. We have three totaling $6,837.91.
I'll make a motion to approve the gifts and donations, Rick.
Second.
Thank you. Motion from Rick, seconded by Brian, to approve the gifts and donations. Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Gifts are approved. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Meeting dates upcoming, Mr. Donovan?
Yeah, we have a couple meetings that are set, and that I want to make sure everyone has on their agenda. On Wednesday of this week, September 30th, we have a benefits advisory group. The HR committee is a part of that group. That is going to be a virtual meeting and starts at 4:30 on September 30th. Scheduled from 4:30 until 5:45. We have next week, on October 5th, our finance committee is hosting a question and answer session on a referendum. That is beginning at 6:30 on October 5th. On October 12th is our next regular school board meeting at 6:30. That will be back at the district office in the PDC. And then we also have scheduled on October 15th, a policy committee meeting, also in the district office in the PDC at 5:30 PM. That's on October 15th. We have a request for a HR committee meeting on October 7th. Again, that's the HR committee on October 7th, from 11:00 AM until 12:30. Does that date and time work for HR committee members?
Assuming that's a Wednesday would work for me.
It does work for me as well.
Yeah, I think that's three times.
So that's the HR committee, October 7th, 11 until 12:30. That'll be in the second floor conference room at the district office. And then we also would like to schedule, it's a little ways out, but we'd like to get on the schedule, a finance committee meeting. And that will be to work on, once the state comes out with some more information on the budget, before we bring that for approval. We're looking at two possible dates for that, October 21st or 22nd. The 21st is a Wednesday, if Wednesdays work better. The 22nd would give us a little bit more cushion, depending on when the state releases that information, to have it ready for the committee and then ready for the board on October 26th. So October 22nd would be ideal, but if that date doesn't work for the finance committee, then October 21st, if that will work better.
22nd would work better for me, all things being equal. 22nd is fine for me.
And I'm fine with either, so let's go 22.
Is there a time that day that works well for the group?
I'm doubtful.
Mr. Dave?
Um, anything after 11:30?
Carrie Bradley, is there a time? How much time do you think that meeting will be, Carrie?
It'd be good if you could schedule an hour.
And Dave, you said anything after 11:30?
Yep, that would be fine.
Should we meet at noon or on the 22nd?
Noon is fine.
All right. That is everything for upcoming meetings.
Yeah, just to clarify, that finance committee hosting the Q and A or the town halls format, whatever, that's here, right, Rich?
Yeah, our client was to do that here, yes.
Client was to do it here, auditorium.
I have a question for Rick and Rich. Is there any plan, schedule a strategic planning meeting?
We can look to get one on the schedule. We had talked about doing that when we get through some of the start of the school year, get the referendum finalized, and some of those things are taking care of. I think, I'm thinking that maybe mid-November would be a good time for some work on the strategic planning. But maybe even having the committee meet once before that to do some of the planning for the strategic planning might be valuable. Did you have, Ryan or others on that committee, did you have a date in mind?
That would be an observer. So I'm just wondering, so I can make sure I can come in to observe.
All right, we'll look at some possible dates and set some of the up to the committee members with some options.
Okay, are we good on meeting dates? Having said that, my agenda is done.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and seconded to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for coming, see you next time.